Okay, I'd like to call a meeting of the Howard Cemetery Commission to order at 1:01.
So I think you have to say that this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for review of the rules and regulations for the cemeteries. First thing is, on the cover sheet, on this packet we have, it should be 2023 instead of 2022, and instead of 18 November, 22 to 13 February of 2023. And then we have on the page B, under section B, and number three, markers, headstones, we added some language.
I think we have to go to, are you on page three?
You want to start on page three?
Was that in blue?
See, that's the one you printed out.
Steve, you have the old one. You keep going back to the old one.
That's the one you gave it to me.
Nope, mine isn't highlighted. Go back to that one.
Sorry, on page three, adding more information about the hours of operations and the interment hours. Do I have any discussions on this?
I think we have to read them into record.
Yeah, yeah, see, I, so we had, I had a discussion with Robin because...
Want me to read this first?
Either way, I just think that the three of us ought to vote on it.
I know, but I think I have to read it first.
Okay.
Persons, we're adding persons seeking information or services covered by these rules and regulations shall be guided by the hours of operations specified for the cemetery office. Outside of these hours, leave a message and a phone number above. And then, interment service hours, except where special arrangements are made, at least 48 hours in advance through the cemetery administrator or their designated representative, there will services shall be provided beyond normal working hours or Sundays and holidays, or holidays. Have discussions?
No, so that was a change because of a situation Robin ran into with the family. And it wasn't spelled out, but other towns spelled that out. So we did literally a quick edit copy, changed it to fit us. It's going to necessitate a change to the fee structure, and I think that should be on the itinerary for the next meeting.
Yep, so in the town of Barnstable and in the town of Yarmouth, because if we have a burial on a Sunday, and the DPW has to cover it if I'm not around, they get four hours minimum at time and a half. Well, our administration fee is $100, and I can assure you that that would, we would be in the deficit for that administration fee. So they've added on a line item in their fees that require a three-hour minimum at time and a half for whichever employee it is that's covering the service.
So...
So we can discuss that at our, at our fee schedule meeting, but each town has their own formula. Some of them have a set rate. If it's going to be on a Sunday, it's going to be an additional $300. Other people do, you know, whichever employee's covering it, times three and a half percent.
Well, next meeting, if you can...
I'll get a list of...
Speak our fee schedule as you think it ought to be because of your experience and the whole point of this last paragraph. And then we can, instead of us reinventing the will and having to look at every single number, I think we can go from there. Be quicker.
Because a lot of people do think it's, oh, it's a long weekend, we'll just do the burial on the holiday. Or, you know what I mean, my whole family's coming down, and we'll do it on that Sunday of that holiday weekend, to that effect, but...
But the Saturdays, are they included in your regular...
Yeah, so we've always done Saturday burials. I think it would be a huge pushback if we tried to not do Saturday burials, and I think that's appropriate to do Saturday burials. But I think Sundays and holidays should be under special circumstances.
The administration, but if he, if the DPW or whoever comes else and they get time and a half on a Saturday, it still affects the fee schedules.
Right.
So the weekend, be a different fee or just keep it like it is?
I think we should, we'll have to visit that at the, at the meeting when we do a fee schedule. I'll look and see how...
Just see how Saturday plays into this.
I will actually write an email to each one of our budding towns and ask them what they do for that, for fee schedule, so. And also check with Yarmouth and Barnstable.
Well, it should be...
At least to cover.
Zero, zero cost to the town.
Okay.
But that's discussion next meeting.
Okay.
So anyway, I move that the changes in blue on page three be accepted and entered into the rule.
Any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so that's legal. We haven't voted on this other stuff, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Everything else is from previous, pre-public hearing.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And I take that back. Actually, this, you're going to page seven next?
Well, eventually.
I think that's the next set of blue that we have to review.
And the other thing, I just, I read, and I didn't know, it's on, under visitation, on the first. Number one, it says the cemetery grounds are not a playground or recreation area. Loud, boisterous, or undignified behavior will not be tolerated. And then it says these rules and regulations have been adopted. Should that be still part of that or be its own sentence at the beginning of all the rules and regulations? Now this takes on almost the same thing.
So it...
I don't, I don't know. It seems, Rob thinks it, it still fits there, but I don't know if it fits there or it should be in front of that because...
I think it does still fit there. I mean, there's a noise bylaw for the town, so that's part of the noise bylaw, I believe.
So I just had questions about...
Well, how about if, how about if we reverse the order of those two sentences?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, just flip them around.
So the verbiage is still there, but we just flip the sentences.
But we're just telling that these whole rules, set of rules is for that, not tucking in after one rule.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I mean, we probably have room to make it a new number one if you want.
I think, I think it's the same idea, though. I think it should just be one. You think it should be two separate numbers?
That's what I was thinking when I first read it. Just want to just review on everything?
You could, yeah. Well, you could put it right after visitation rules?
Yeah.
Or it could go away entirely. I mean, it's not directive in nature.
Because I think they've been adopted to advance and secure these public interests since we've had problems recently. It's kind of like reinforcing the fact.
Or it becomes new item 12.
Yeah, I would put it at the beginning.
As a conclusion sentence.
Well, that's true, too. It could be...
That, that last sentence in item one...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I would go with, put it on the last packet.
So take these rules...
We're going to take the last sentence in A, number one, and make a new item 12 as a closing, and it doesn't really change what's in here for the public.
It's just formatting?
It's wordsmithing for...
Okay, editing.
You're so smart.
I try it. I have my moments, trust me.
Hit that panic button.
They're not, they're not that often. Okay, and all the interments, that all seems to be good, right?
So these came out of the first public hearing?
Yep.
Right, so do we need to read these in since this is the first public hearing?
Since? That it's physically typed in? Was it typed in last time?
No, I think the, these evolved from a discussion.
Okay. I would read them in then, just to be on the safe side.
Okay, and adding to section B, under interments, adding parts E, F, and G, E reads, "All modifications or changes to inscriptions or existing monuments must receive the prior approval of the Howard Cemetery Administrator." Reference sections B, 3E. F, section F is persuading to the Mass General Law Part One Title, XVI, Chapter 114, Section 43, and failure to comply with this section will result in a $300 fine. Monument, Monumental Masons and Installers encouraged to take note. Letter G, at the present time, the Howard Cemetery do not have a designated section for the scattering of cremains. Until an area is, is designated, the scattering of ashes, cremains, is expressly prohibited. Have you already bow those in?
Yep.
English teacher, should Monumental Masons, Masons be capitalized?
I don't think so, actually.
Okay.
Not M for Masons, right? But Monumental's the beginning of a sentence.
Right, Monumental, yes, but Masons lowercase.
Okay, sure.
Almost snuck one by you. Okay, then the general succession of burial lots, there was nothing changed. That whole part was added at one point. Does that all seem to be up to par for everybody? The succession of burial lots?
Yep.
Then we go to cemetery lots, lot usage, lot sizes. Does anybody have anything they want to add, change, discuss?
It's pretty much stayed the same.
Come on, it goes on to the next page. We'll all, what they can do. I know we mentioned about not having the shepherd's hooks, but there seems to be a lot of them in Island Pond.
I know.
Do we make it a certain size shepherd hook? Because if it's small, up against the stone?
No, because they'll start, they start moving them away from the stone, and they start putting them in the middle of the lots, and then they'll want to put them in the cremation section. It's just a maintenance issue.
Okay.
I think for the guys more than for us.
It's like the only cemetery really see it anywhere.
What?
I don't, I haven't seen them in the other cemeteries.
I know.
Few here and there, but Island Pond's the most.
Right.
Okay, markers, headstones, and monuments.
Just E, E and F?
Just E and F?
Which is the same as the other section that you previously read, but you could...
It's, it's a cross-reference, so it's in both places.
Are we happy with the monument, monumentation on all the, all the lots?
Other than the capital on the Masons, again.
Oh, yeah.
I just took it.
So right now, it goes, if we have a full stone, a headstone on the single lot, you get one flat marker. If you have four burials or cremations, you can have up to two flat markers?
Is, that's the new...
Or are we going to allow...
Yeah, two flat markers, you're right.
Only two?
Yeah. So the thing, the reason why we were implementing that is because we don't want the entire grave space paved over with markers. We want some grass on each lot. So we were looking at, when we do the new section in Island Pond, we could have a section where we change that, and in that specific section, we could have it. We could change it for that reason.
Okay, I didn't...
But you, you guys are the commissioners. It's your call.
What do you think about that, Rob?
Well, I mean, I thought we discussed that like crazy once before.
Yep, we did.
But I don't know if we ever came to a conclusion on that.
I remember I tried to draw it out to see what it would look like.
Basically, a two-by-one, if you put four on the lot, it would take up the grass space of half the lot on a four-by-eight.
Yeah, but you have the foundation underneath them, each one of those stones, which brings it out a little bit further. So the foundation under each one of those gravestones. And then if you do in the next burial, you get all that cement.
Well, how big is the foundation underneath?
Well, um, so it's usually a little slightly bigger than the monument itself, depending on when you look at them. If you've ever been down there and they're pouring the foundations for it, because it's down a little bit deeper, and then they just put a little bit of dirt around the edges before they set the monument, when they set the monument, and then their back fell a little bit. Because you don't want it the exact size, because then it can, you know...
Yeah, it's like a one-to-two inch buffer.
Yeah, yeah.
Not scientific, but yeah.
So the two-foot way goes across the gravesite?
So it's like 28 inches across, concrete foundation.
Yeah.
So if there's fours, is there enough room on a two-by-one to put two decinations of, should we allow? If there's four buried there, they can put two markers, one in the first half, the second half, just to get more room?
So we normally allow them to do like an upright headstone in a footstone, but people sometimes just do a flat flush headstone type in a flat flush, and they put two names on both.
You can put two names on each one, basically, huh?
Yeah, you can put up to four names on one of those stones. It's big enough to accommodate four names. So some people don't want a whole monument. They just want the flat flush marker. They're just trying to create less of a footprint, and I think more and more people want to create less of a footprint, so.
So we could always visit that if someone had a special request, is to turn it sideways so that it's longer?
Oh, we would not, we would not allow them to turn it sideways.
No.
No, because their lot is, so when you come to the cemetery, you want to be able to, everything should be uniformed going across. You don't want to have monuments going one way and another, because when they ride over with the mowers, you want everything going the same way. You want them cutting the grass the same way, so. If you had it going, instead of going like this, you had it, normally they come like this. You're saying you want to put them like that, longer?
If they had four, and then they wanted to put half of each one as a different, who's underneath it? Or there's enough on the one-foot side? Because they're two-by-one, right?
There's plenty of, plenty of space. You can put, in the cremation section, in the old cremation section, they used to allow eight cremations in there, and that, that whole side got full. People have little teeny markers, you know what I mean? And they have eight names on one little stone, so I mean, it's definitely doable.
Okay, I'm just coming up with questions.
The National Cemetery, they do that. The husband and wife go onto one.
One, right.
Flat flush.
Yeah.
Take up, if the husband dies first, you know, he's decorated and branches service when he's served. And this just happened with a family, and then when they bury the wife on top of the husband, up comes his decorated monument, and it now has both of their names and nothing fancy, just dates.
Yep.
Okay, I was just asking questions, just trying to come up with stuff that people may ask us.
Sure, yeah.
See if you can prepare for that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Okay, and then we've added sections E and F. "All modifications or changes to inscriptions on existing monuments must receive prior approval by the Howard Cemetery Administrator" and to the Mass General Law Part One, Title, XVI, Chapter 114, Section 43, and failure to comply with this section will result in a $300 fine. Monumental Masons and Installers are encouraged to take note.
And, and this came about because, believe it or not, I think it was Mary Eldridge, right? So there was two Mary Eldridges in Evergreen Cemetery. Both were still alive. The first Mary Eldridge dies, her lots on one side of the cemetery, the other Mary Eldridge is on the other side. And the person who was going to do the engraving came in and engraved on the wrong Mary Eldridge's stone. And then she called the office to inform us that she was still alive. So they need to fill out a form before they engrave on a stone, because they engraved on the wrong stone. So we want to make sure that we have the right lot, right person, because that was a very costly thing. The town didn't have to pay for it. The mason actually had to pay for it, but she was pretty upset. So we don't want, you know, people don't want to go down to the grave yet.
And once it's engraved, it can't be erased.
No, he had, she had, he had to get a whole, he had to redo her whole monument, which was expensive.
That's it for the rules and regulations?
Yes, because of the changes.
We have the, we did the changes. We got all the frequently asked questions, the definitions.
So some of these rules and regulations have come about because of a lot of the debris that's in the cemetery right now, and Jim had sent me a message this morning that he was removing all of the Christmas decorations that are still up. And so I told him that I would announce it at this meeting, and they just started to remove them, but I'm going to try to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday night to also say publicly, you know, they're supposed to be removed anyways by the end of January usually, but it's in February, and there are now still Christmas wreaths up on people's gravesites, and there are still Christmas decorations and...
And a couple of trees.
Yeah, a couple of trees. So that stuff needs to be removed because, you know, it's almost spring, and they have to come down. There also was, me and Dory, who's my AmeriCorps member, walked through the cemetery today. We're going to be getting the tree signs in soon, so we were just walking around, seeing if there's any other trees that we have not identified, and as we were walking around, there's a lot of debris. There's a lot of old, you know, pots that people had their flowers in that they threw behind where their lots are. So we're going to do a cleanup one day and try to remove all of that stuff away from the conservation land. All of these things that people place, if they don't remove them, they end up, you know, we'll have a storm, and the stuff then blows throughout the cemetery and ends up in the Lily Pond, or will end up in the actual Island Pond, or on the trail system. And we're just trying to protect our budding properties from all this debris that gets blown around, so. Just wanting to make people aware. The reasoning behind our last meeting, we had two people come from the, one from the Conservation Department in support of that, and then another person from the general public who was concerned about the amount of, what would you call it?
Artificial flowers?
Non-biogradable...
Materials.
Materials that end up in our environment, that are left on gravesites that end up not being removed. People will come here for Christmas, leave all these things, and then they don't come back until the late spring or early summer, and it just doesn't look appropriate. Or it can be upsetting to the butter, budding lots to go and visit their loved ones and they see all of this old...
Stuff.
Stuff. I don't know what, how you would, you know, stuff that they bought at the Dollar Tree or, you know, old flowers that are now hardly recognizable what they were originally on these gravesites that are still there, so. I know the DPW spends days and days going and cleaning off all of these lots. They do take all of the things that they collect, and they put them behind the DPW in case somebody feels there is something there that they absolutely want back, whether it be, you know, maybe they use the same foundation to make their Christmas decorations, or maybe they have a special bow on it, or who knows? But, so they keep them for a little bit of a time back there before they end up putting them into the landfill.
Which is above and beyond.
It is, but I think they, the DPW, you know, wants to make sure that nobody will come back to them and say that they, you know, didn't take care of their things, so.
Let us know when you're going to do that, and if I'm available, I'll be glad to help. When you go to clean up the...
Oh, the boys, the boys. The cemetery employees were in there today, starting to clean up Island Pond, so. I don't, I don't know which cemetery on what rotation, but boy, is it a beautiful day to be outside.
Can we take a vote on accepting these rules, or do we have to wait till you physically make the change of, of putting that number 12 in?
I think that's just a formatting. We haven't changed any words. It's just a formatting.
Content is the same. We're just...
We're just...
Rearranging the deck chairs.
Yeah, so you could make a motion to rear, to, for the edits. I mean, there's, there's no changing in any wording. We're just...
No, we already approved the other parts we added.
Right, right.
So, okay. Does anybody have any other discussion on this?
No, I may, I move, I move that we make those grammatical in rearranging changes and send this on to town meeting.
Okay.
Accept it?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Good job by everybody. Yeah, that, that was a project that I had.
It was.
So I'll also send a copy to the Board of Selectmen. I'm sure they're going to want to see it. They saw the changes before, and I think they really liked them, especially Mary, and, you know, said that they were very well done. So I'll make sure that they have a copy of this updated one and ask them if there's anything else they'll need from us to move forward. I think they just need the language of how it's going to be.
We need to, it needs to go back into that town meeting format.
Right.
Like Steve's copy was, but this, this copy isn't.
Yep, okay.
It had something at the bottom.
Okay.
And then on the March 7th meeting, can we do, look at some of the other cemeteries we have?
Yeah, so, oh, I have some good news, too. On March 21st and 22nd, the tree company will, will be going out to Bank Street. So I'm writing a letter. I'll draft the letter, and I'll have it in your packet for the 7th, so you guys can review it, so that we can then get it right out to them. I'll send it registered letter, so that they're aware that we're going to be in those two days. They did, the tree that's in the center of Bank Street, when they went down there and met with Jim, that, that tree itself, the one that's covered with ivy, the entire top of it is dead, and they are recommending that we remove that bigger tree from the center. It only has leaves on the bottom half of the tree.
Due to ivy.
Yeah, due to the ivy strangling it. So after they remove that tree, and we'll see what, I mean, there's plenty of trees on that property, but then we can look at it afterwards, and we still have that $30,000 that we're buying trees with this year anyways.
Couple nice trees or something.
So we could, we could plant a tree there, you know, after we clean it all up.
Okay, and is anybody available at Town Hall to write that guy a letter about his hedge?
Not currently, but I will, I'll draft the letter, and in the letter, when we say that we're coming for, to remove those trees, explain to them that this is our lot layout, and I'll give them the diagram that was stamped by Paul Sweetser that shows their encroaching on our property. So I'll include that in the packet, the materials I send off to that one, about her, not to the other one, but to the one particular.
And then maybe we can set up time to go visit some of these remaining cemeteries that we saw after the meeting? That we still have to go look at. Kim and I were out hiking off of Lothravab and came across a cemetery in the middle of there.
Yeah.
Which needs some serious work.
Okay, all right.
If you, if you go in by the Catholic Church, it's their first...
It's the Mahedebel Wixen lot, right?
Yeah, I think that's...
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like if you go up Lothravab, the first conservation every part at, there's a road that goes, like a dirt road. You walk on the boardwalk and go out around, and come out of the cemetery in the middle of nowhere.
Ooh, I had no idea it was there.
And it's a lot of...
So if you go into my office, there's a rubbing of her stone.
And that's on our list.
Yeah.
And there's a small one right beside it. Looked like the top broke off. I don't know if it's underneath some of the debris or something that's there.
Oh, I haven't been out to the kind of...
There's a smaller, and the fence is pretty much rotting.
Okay, so we'll look at the fence as well?
Is that in the Kelly, not the Kelly Street, the...
The Smith's family.
Smith family.
Mm-hmm.
Could that be approached at, at a Boy Scout meeting for Eagle Scout project to, to do something at those, or?
Yeah, I mean, if, the other thing is, is if we, if we...
A bench or something, something you can sit on.
If we purchase the reels, we could also ask AmeriCorps if they'll do it, if, if the Boy Scouts can. So we could have a couple of AmeriCorps members come and put...
That one may be worth the small sign, too.
Yeah, small sign. Okay.
Depends how much it costs.
Okay.
The Wixen?
The Lothravab one.
A lot there up the cemetery.
Lothravab, sorry. If you're Cape Cod, it's Lothravab.
Would you put the, if you put it on the cemetery plot, way up in the woods?
Yeah.
Because you'd never see it from the street.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other business?
We did get the financial statement, right?
Yeah, can I just have that back? I'm going to, I'll put it on the spreadsheet if I can, if I can find the, the identifiers for it to track it, but I think if nothing else, this first one, I'll run it over to your office.
Okay.
I think this first one probably should be entered, you know, just Xerox copied.
Okay.
Where you stick your, you know, the revolving account.
Yep.
No, actually, I can't, because like they've got this fidelity treasury portfolio.
Mm-hmm.
I can't track that on the internet.
Okay.
The ETFs and stuff I can, but that's actually, they've actually bought bonds, so. I'll just give it back to you, but when did this get sent, do you know?
I just got it today.
And you check the mail every day?
I was in here yesterday, but...
So it comes mid-month?
Yep.
Yeah, so we won't have one for the next meeting. So we won't have one for the next meeting. So every other month, we can make that an item.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I'll have the, um, minutes from the February meeting.
Okay.
And this meeting.
Okay.
For next month, but I didn't see one for January. Is there one?
Nope, I meant to look.
You're gonna get back to me.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at that.
January was... We met January 10th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't do it, so I know that. So they're not done.
I'll find them.
Okay. It's nice that they're videotaped.
Yes, and I appreciate it, Caleb, coming up and putting these microphones closer to us.
Oh, because I'm-
I was saying that-
I mumble.
Rob was kind of sitting side to, to the camera. And when he talked, I couldn't hear him very well. And obviously, because the mic was not close enough to where he was, but we're all good now.
Cool. Any other business anybody wants to bring up for a future meeting or?
If you want to look, R E V, www.rev.com. And that was the transcribed video that was sort of the best one-
Okay.
That I saw, but couldn't quite guess. I mean, you had to sign up to do something and I wasn't gonna do that. We can take a guess at how much it would cost and then see if it's worth.
So, uh, on another note, I didn't mention that, um, I did go before the CPC and, um, the Revolutionary War and Civil War memorials will be, um, part of the, this annual town meeting. I also met with, um, the, um, Veterans Agent and he is going to be presenting this to the, um, VFW in Hyannis at the end of the month. And I asked him if I could go and do the presentation with him. So they do have funds that they're gonna be giving us, but I'd like to give a presentation to them as well. So that way they know everything that is on there. I have been, um, vetting every single one of the, uh, soldiers and going through them all and pulling their pension files. And then those ones who were lucky enough to survive, I did find two that were on prison ships in, um, New York and died in there. And their bodies never returned here. I'm assuming they probably just threw them overboard. Or, or they, you know, burial at sea. But, um, they do not have any memorials anywhere. So I'm just going through and I'm listing them and then I'll sort them by town. So as I'm going to other towns, like a whole bunch of them moved, so many of them moved to Vermont was unbelievable. I can't believe how many moved to Vermont. But, um, and some moved to New York. Some of, ones buried up at Mount Auburn. But there, you know, quite a few of them moved around. But, um, less are in Brewster than we thought. My last check, I only had 24 buried in Brewster out of the 284, so 1% of all of the veterans. So I'll have that list completed so that way when we go and speak to the people from Provincetown or from Eastham who have some of our soldiers buried now in their cemeteries, that, you know, they'll, even though they became later residents of their town, they fought from our town, so they're on our memorial.
But they're still gonna go on our monument.
That's correct.
Right.
Right.
Regardless of where they are, yeah.
Yeah.
Because Harris and Brewster was one town way back then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's very exciting. I'm, I'm excited for that.
If you look up the history of Wing Island. Wing Island, which is in Brewster, there's a really interesting story. I don't know if I want to put it on, on tape, but it has to do with the secession of Brewster, Harwich from Brewster.
Oh.
Or what created Brewster. And it was funny because part, the verbiage in it, I said it to the kids because the wing that's, the John Wing that's more, immortalized on a stone on the trail is my wife's ninth, 10th great-grandfather. Anyway, but, but it says that, that the people of Harwich separated from the, the, the wealthy and upper whatever people in Brewster. Yeah, it was just, it was just kind of funny.
I heard, I heard it-
They singled that out in the-
I, I, I heard it was the opposite, the wealthy people from Brewster separated from the people of Harwich.
Right, it may be that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Chatham wouldn't go do anything with Harwich. We tried to combine schools for years, ever since I was born, probably.
We should probably adjourn. Adjourn the meeting?
Do I have any other business or you want to adjourn? Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some of-
Next meeting.
Is March 7th. And we'll try to do, uh, go visit a couple of the cemeteries at that point.
Is there a seconded?
Do I have a second on the closing? Seconded, meeting's done at 1:36.